It still bothers me that they moved that. Good evening, everybody. The Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on Tuesday, February 14th, on Tuesday, February 14th, 2023, beginning at 6:30 PM at the Newton Town Hall. I would like to salute the flag first, but is there an echo? No? Okay. The pledge of allegiance is-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first thing on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for the updated of the land use chapter of the master plan, and I'm guessing this is in your court, Mr. Piper? Or this row?
Land use is first.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
So, this is the hearing for the public, for the land use chapter that the board's been working on for the past couple of months. It's really an update of the existing land use in town. It covers the overview of your different zoning districts, provides some comparison with some neighboring towns just for perspective, and then lays out some future land use recommendations and actions for the planning board and some other town departments and boards to take going forward. Pulled in a lot of outreach from the 2021 master plan survey that was done in January of 2021. We did do a follow-up survey in November just to confirm the findings of that broader survey result. We got about 50 people that responded to the second survey and about 400 that responded to the first, so some pretty good public outreach for a land use master plan chapter. This is one of the required chapters for planning boards to have under state law. Really loud.
We need to mute that laptop again.
Let me see if that works a little better. All right. Is that better?
No.
Yes? No? Maybe. Is that better? Yes? Okay. Hearing myself in duplicate is not fun. So, some of the major additional outreach, or no, I'm sorry, not outreach, recommendations that come out of all of the data that is in the land use chapter, there are three main ones. I'm just gonna give a summary of them, basically to evaluate your zoning districts, to make sure that the districts and the uses that are allowed within them, and the constraints that you impose on them for variety of reasons, be it density, environmental protection, trying to mitigate impacts to neighboring districts, to make sure that those are still the desire of the townspeople and are compliant with existing state and federal laws. It's a very broad recommendation. There are some more concrete action items underneath it. Most of them are only between one and five years out to help build momentum in there. You've actually already started work, and we're gonna talk about that later in the meeting, on trying to better evaluate that. Part of that will be during the upcoming chapter with the housing chapter that you guys have secured some funding for that we'll talk about later in the meeting tonight. The next recommendation is to coordinate with the Conservation Commission and the Recreation Commission to identify areas of open space that may not currently be protected in town for utilizing for passive recreation and environmental protection, based on some of the feedback that was really a strong desire of the residents of Newton, was they really valued the rural character and the natural resources in town, really wanting to preserve those for a variety of reasons, for both recreation, but also for natural resource protection, drinking water concerns, so kind of a cross-cutting topic. And then the last recommendation is to protect open spaces such as wetlands, forests, and agricultural lands from the negative environment, and negative, from negative environmental and economic impacts of development. So, it does not say, "Don't develop anything anywhere." It just says, "Be careful with where you're going to allow development and how you're going to allow it to occur." That was also a really strong desire. People had a lot of concern, and there was a range of people that did not want any more development in Newton at all, to people who wanted to have a lot more development in town. So, this is meant to sort of bridge that gap of the majority of respondents who really just want conscious development. They want it to be sustainable. They want to minimize the negative impact. They want to keep the character of the town. That is the overall presentation. I'm happy to go into any more detail or any of the data points that are in there, but I believe it's been posted online and available at the planning board office for the, since the four weeks or so since you guys moved it to this public hearing. If you're ready to, and you should take some public comment and open that up to the public, but if you're ready at that end of that to move it forward with either minor changes or no changes, then it can be adopted with a motion.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board?
No, I'm good with it.
The audience? Mr. Fitzpatrick? No.
I'll make a motion to accept the updated land use chapter of the master plan.
Second.
This is Barbara. I'll second.
Would it be possible to turn the speakers down a little bit in here unless somebody else is having a hard time hearing?
No, I can go last.
That would be-
They're super loud.
Louder than normal. I think you just turn them down, maybe. Everything at my house is loud, but-
Mine too.
My youngest is deaf, so he's just like really loud.
Yeah.
But-
It's done?
Oh, perfect.
He actually listens to the meeting.
Oh. Okay.
He needs to roll call.
So, Mr. Guide made the motion, and I'll say Barbara seconded it.
Yes, Mr. Piper seconded it. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So, I will send a copy that has the adopted date of tonight's hearing added to it and the draft words removed, but other than that, it will be identical to what you have presented before you.
Perfect.
Then I will post it on the website.
Do you suggest that we publicly advertise it on social media? No?
I mean, you certainly can put up that it has been adopted.
Okay.
Given that we will be doing some housing chapter items coming up, it would be good, at least at that point, to also announce that it does exist. I mean, it has been out there for the public consumption, but-
Okay. Thank you. Second on the agenda tonight is a public hearing on the updated capital improvement plan. Here's your-
So, we've been, we've gotten a good data table from Mark Andrews, and on the screen you will see a quick graph or two that I put on. What you're looking at is that there's certain departments that will be needing funds in '24, '26, '28, and that is based on money, and there's a second graph. You can scroll down, Jim. That shows you the, the demand for the years, so there's a higher demand for next year versus 2015, or 2025, and then a couple more years, 2028 is gonna have a lot more requirements. And if you can scroll down a little bit more, I just did a quick breakdown, using Newton's town budget of $4 million. The average projected cost of the average project, which could be a fire bay garage, it could be a new roof, is $267,000. That's just an average cost, and just to give a concept, conceptual idea, what we're looking at is that each project has a weight of 14% of our town's budget every year. Below all this in disclaimers is a bunch of funding that may be available through programs like ARPA that would offset or pay for that entirely. There's some caveat stuff, like the police has a 50-50 match with the state. That's, I think that's specifically for cruisers. And that's as far as we got. Jim has a copy of that data if anybody would like it in the future.
Jen?
Just a comment. When you're putting out, especially for the larger projects, putting out the bond rate and knowing what that cost is gonna be actualized over the 10- or 20-year timeframe can help understand like that impact, that tax cost. I don't know if you did that in this, but it's just a, a recommendation to, for larger costs, how a lot of towns are willing to, if they're taking out bonds.
Board comments?
No questions.
Thank you for pulling that together. I know it was, took a little bit of time and persuasion, so.
Yep. Appreciate all your hard work.
Anybody from online? Barbara, do you have any comments?
No, it all looks good. Thank you for all the work you did for that.
Next is a public hearing on the updated policies and, I'll do it to make a motion to-
Motion to adopt.
As stated-
You, you need to have a, you need to let the public-
Is there any-
Comments on this?
Comments from the public?
Jamie Fitzpatrick from Newton. I see a number of big items up there, a million and a half, 3 million, et cetera. Is there a list as to what compromises these, these big-ticket items that are, is available?
A list meaning?
So, I'll, our role in this was to reach out to department heads and ask what their anticipated costs are. So, we're, this is just information that we gathered to then be put in front of the public. There's no actual budgets being set or costs being-
Forecasted needs.
Yeah, forecasted, that's a very good way of putting it.
So, let me, let me rephrase it then, if I might. Would the proper audience be to find out what those intentions are, the Board of Selectmen?
So, there actually is, according to the, what you're probably, I think what you're looking to find out, Jamie, is that the different department heads had put in what they're looking to need and the requirements are, whether, like he showed the police for vehicles, the fire department for their fire apparatuses that are old, gonna be needing replaced within, you know, said certain years to offset and not be trying to buy them all at one time, or the, trying to keep up with the roads, with them needing money and stuff like that. And possibly even, Mr. Povero provided, if the town was to buy vehicles, what vehicles they should start to purchase for, because in the few years coming down, like he's running now, but if he decides not to, and the town is going to need its own equipment, he put a list of trucks together that the town should be looking to purchase, a rough estimate of cost for those vehicles, and there is a form that has all of that listed from all the department heads, which is what comes up with the different funds that they're proposing on the thing, to kind of put them together.
So, just from a governance perspective, the motion that you're gonna make and approve means what?
That's a-
Do you want me to explain?
Yes, please, because I had the same question.
So, the reason, I'm gonna back up just a touch because it'll help answer the question. The planning board under state law has to adopt, is responsible for the capital improvement plan, which is the capital expenses, budgetary, planning exercise for the town. It goes out six years. The reason the planning board is in charge of it is because it's meant to fit with some of the long-term planning of the town, so whether it's land use or community investments. That's the reason the planning board is in charge of that. It is an advisory document only. It hasn't, it does not have any legal tie to Newton's budget process. It is meant to help aid in the annual budget process that the select board goes through. So, it does not, if there's something up there for a million dollars for, I'm just gonna say, a new fire truck, there's nothing that the capital improvement program and plan that's up there does not then obligate the town to put forth a million dollars in budgetary process. It's meant to help spread out the long-term, big costs of the town to, for better planning purposes, really to help stabilize the tax base to the extent possible. But it is, it is advisory only, so.
So, it's just an overview for the selectmen to look at when they're building the budget?
So that we know what we're up against in order to keep the town up to snuff and what we should be looking to possibly do.
I would, I would add just a point of caution. Once things are adopted, they end up having a life of their own, whether you expected them or not.
I will say the town is also obligated to update it once a year, and I would strongly encourage the planning board to continue its momentum going forward to do that.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification to keep this in line. Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick, for your comments. I understand what you, so, Jim, can you put a note in the calendar that we have to update this in nine months, at least?
Sure.
Assuming you're still here with us and you're not leaving the board?
I wasn't planning on it.
Jamie, it's very different than what we would do for the school CIP. Very different. That's why I'm sitting here like, I don't know what we're doing, because it's very different from what I'm used to on the school side, that CIP, versus this one. Because yeah- And that's my concern on the school side. That's different. This- We adopted one. You adopt it and you drive it. Oh, that's already agreed to. No, it was, it has to be reviewed and ROI is established. Yeah, no, this is, it's very different from what I'm used to and what you're used to.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just address Mr. Guide's comment?
Yes.
As being one of the people that drafted the first school district CIP, it is an advisory document. It is not set in stone.
The planning board's CIP, or the-
The school board's.
Neither is the planning board, and the planning board should actually reflect the schools' CIP as part of it, but as in, usually as an appendix.
Sure.
And, Mr. Chair, once this has been adopted, I will get all the documentation, all the paperwork that was Mr. Mashon mentioned, and put it together.
Mended or-
And most likely, it will, it'll take a few weeks, but it will be on the website.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good.
I have Mr. Mashon making a motion to adopt it.
And we need a second.
I'll second it.
Is that Mr. Piper?
Oh, it was me, Mr. Guide.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Sorry, but when you talk like this, it's hard to tell sometimes. Okay. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper? Thank you. Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Thank you. Third on the agenda is a public hearing on the updated policies and procedures manual.
Do you want me to cover that?
Yes, briefly?
Very briefly. The policies and procedures manual was updated with everything to that point that had been changed in state law under House Bill 1661, and actually caught a couple of things that had transpired in the past that nobody had caught. But it led to an entire, basically a rewrite of most of the document. It is now neutral gender, or gender neutral, and I caught, I think, every typo, every grammatical correction and what have you.
Thank you.
Which means that it's good for about another three hours.
Till the state decides to change it again.
Exactly.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Piper got the second.
Yeah.
And a roll, please.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Fourth on the agenda tonight is Joseph's, Joseph and Diane, is it Anairi or Anair? Anair. Thank you.
Just one thing, Ms. Collier, I apologize, she joined during the vote.
Thank you. They request a public hearing for a two-lot subdivision at 50 Pond Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 5, Block 4, Lot 1. Mr. Quintel?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the Inaires are here tonight, and so they have owned their property for a long time on Pond Street, and they were looking to possibly do a subdivision a while ago. They hired a surveyor and found that they were able to get at least 60,000 square feet per, for two lots, and so they had land enough. And then they asked me to look into doing further work to see about doing a subdivision. So, I identified the edge of wetlands, which is across the back of the property, and, and then we looked at setback requirements to see if we could meet the setback requirements for a proposed house, and as you can see on the plan, we show where a proposed lot line would go. We show a house that basically sets back over 70 feet from the center line of the road, which meets that requirement. We did test pits and did, within a 4,000-square-foot area, show a well, a house, and proposed driveway. We did a topographic survey, and that information is on Sheet 1 and 2. So, we then contacted Jim Gove from Gove Environmental Services to conduct a high-intensity soil map, and as you can see on Sheet 2, we wound up with each lot having decent soils, but not quite enough soils. And as you recall, we were at this planning board meeting a while ago, and we were looking at the possibility of getting a waiver from the lot size by soil type requirements. So, the lot where the existing house is, 54-1, winds up being .9 lots according to soil type, and the proposed lot would be .83. And so, I prepared a waiver requirement and, a waiver request, and made an amendment to that, so what I'll do is I'll read that. So, according to subdivision regulations, Section 8.3, .3, minimum lot size, as clearly shown on the plans, all wetlands are contiguous along the rear of the property. The uplands are contiguous along the front of the property. These are unique conditions. These uplands vary in depth from 110 feet to 140 feet from the street, and the upland NRCS soil type is Windsor loamy sand, which is good soil type. The high-intensity map by Gove and environmental has identified this upland soil to require a minimum of 45, 44,500 square feet per lot. So, all good soils, it's ideal for development. The proposed lot, like I said, is .9 of this amount, and 411 is .83 of this amount. As there is ample space for driveway, house, well, and septic, there is no need for encroachment onto, or near the wetlands. Therefore, in this case, we feel that is a reasonable request to ask for a waiver. So, the only change that I've done to the plan is that it was brought to my attention by Mr. Doggett, that one of the abutting lot lines in the rear was, was not in the right location, so we have made that change. As you can see on this plan, we had it over here, and we just moved it over here. So, it's just a difference of location from the ownership of the abutters, and I think that that's, that's the question that was asked, and I think I addressed that, so if not, let me know. So, if you have copies of the plans, you can see what we've done, and I guess I can ask you if you have any questions, and I can hopefully answer them for you.
Thank you.
Feel like we're-
Oh, Jen?
So, I reviewed the application. It appears complete with the waiver request. I had asked Mr. Quintel if they could elaborate on the waiver request, which he just did, just so that it meets your waiver requirements. Beyond that and your standard conditions of approval, I don't have any further comment on this application. You do need to take up the waiver if you take jurisdiction over it.
I don't believe we took jurisdiction.
No.
No, I said, so when, when they take jurisdiction, or if they take jurisdiction, then they have to do the waiver.
So, I'll make a motion that we take jurisdiction?
Second. Second.
Thank you.
Roll, please.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Any discussion from the board? I know we asked a few questions last time.
And he answered our questions, and this actual subdivided lot is actually drier than the other lot. That seems like a no-brainer to me, so.
Annie or Barbara?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Yeah, I have, I have a question. I believe that Mr. Quintel just alluded to 8.3.3 that he's asking the waiver from, and I believe that there was a suggestion from Jen that the waiver should be from the subdivision regulation 10.1D. Is that correct, Jen?
No, that, that's where the waiver criteria is listed, is that 10.1D. So, that was just the conditions for granting the waiver that I requested the applicant supply some narrative to for the board's consideration. But the waiver request is from 8.33 of the subdivision.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Did you have copies of that waiver request?
Not the elaborated one. At least I don't.
You can provide an electronic copy, or we'll scan it for the record. Thank you very much. Is there any more discussion from the board? How about from the public or the applicant themselves? Anybody online, Jim? I don't see anybody.
Nobody's.
I'll motion to make that waiver.
A motion for the waiver to Section 8.33, minimum lot size, based on soil classifications?
Yes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. And just for the applicant, this takes about a week to get-
So, that was just the waiver?
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, it's the whole application?
Thank you. I'm jumping ahead. Long day.
It's all good.
Is there a motion to accept?
Nope. You gotta do-
I do, they're gonna do the whole thing.
Public comment.
How about a public comment on the entire project? Or from the applicant? Or online? Thank you. No comments on the board?
No.
Actually, there's one more step before you do that. You have to find at least one, I have to be able to list a finding of fact.
This is just public comment?
Excuse me?
This is just public comment. This is just public comment.
Oh, when he closes, "public comment."
So, we have no comments from the public, so we'll close "public comment," and now we have to do "finding of facts" based on the new statute. Do you want to list them out, or can you list the four of them?
Other than the fact that with the waiver, it is in compliance with zoning regulation, subdivision regulations.
Right, and that it's well within reason?
Yep.
Thank you.
With the soil, what is it I'm trying to say?
High-intensity soil survey?
Yes, thank you.
So, is that somebody's motion?
Well, that's just a finding of fact, so as long as they're in agreement, I just need to be able to put it in the notice of decision.
Do you want me to clarify that?
Yeah.
So, based on the discussion of the board, it is our opinion that due to the limited deviation from our regulation, that the waiver request should be granted. Does that satisfy everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Now, we can make a motion to accept or to approve the project based on the waiver.
Motion to approve project and accept with the waiver.
It's just, it's a motion to accept or to approve the application with your standard conditions.
Yep.
Which are recordable Mylar, monumentation, all signatures on the plan.
Motion made.
Second.
Mr. Piper? Thank you.
We also want to note on the plan, if it's all right to speak, we want to note on the plan about the waiver, that the waiver was approved.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Just want to make sure we have everything.
I was waiting for Jim to actually read off those minor things for the Mylar and whatever, the conditions, like you usually...
As Rauten did, they are to supply a recordable Mylar and to set the bounds.
So, we're all set, I think, Jim, if you're waiting on the roll.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fifth on the agenda tonight is a continuation of 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp., Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing on a four-building condominium site plan off South Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27.3. And because of my confusion last time, or the confusion on this, this project is the...
Unbuilt?
Unbuilt portion, that there is nothing there. It's the property parcel...
Behind Howard Lane.
Behind Howard Lane. And it is... Yeah, I'll stop at that. Thank you. Mr. Guide?
Good evening.
Guys, in the other sheet, I took away the word condominium, because that has to be a separate proposal after.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, my name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones &amp; Beach Engineers. We will be asking for a continuance tonight, but wanted to update the board on what we've done since the last time we met. We did update the drainage calculations, and a discussion was provided in the letter, the update letter, kind of pointing out the discussion that we had last time. We are in contact with the gas company and are working with them on the crossing agreement. It's more just paperwork that has to be completed. They're all fine with what's going on. We also provided a bond estimate. I haven't heard back from the town engineer regarding his input on the bond estimate, but that'll have to be done before we're finished. We also provided the cut-and-fill quantities. We're still working on, with DOT, on the access. They have, we have been assured that the access at the proposed location will be granted. We're just working out the details on what the mitigation is going to be, the widening of, to, for, on 108. The hydrological study is underway. It should be completed within the next week or so. Unfortunately, they didn't get it done before we could submit for tonight's meeting. And lastly, we have submitted the site plans to Plastow and are to be heard tomorrow night. So, be happy to take any questions the board has, but we will be asking for a continuance.
Thank you.
So, this is not a question. It's just more for the drainage calculations, the hydro study, DOT. You still want, and the bond, you still want Mike Fignelli to review all of it? I mean, some of this he just got on Thursday. So, I think if we can move things to him as we are at least getting them, that at least allows for you to get a review as soon as he is able to do it. So, just making maybe sure that any funds needed for his review are available so that the application can move forward.
Do you know the balance of the NEPA account, Jim?
This one is still healthy.
Okay. That's good. So, we will start, you're not anticipating any changes between last Thursday and...
No, no.
Next week, when Mike can jump into it?
We are not.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board?
When's our next meeting? Is it the 28th?
The next meeting, yes, is February 28th. Our meeting following that is not until March 28th.
Because of elections and everything else? Sure. So, are you anticipating being ready for the 28th?
I am.
I know it's, you're waiting on other people, and I get that.
Well, obviously, DOT probably, we're not going to have that in time, but that's kind of out of your purview anyway, besides the location of it, which you know where it's going, and the improvements that are going to be required are shown on the plans. They may shift a little bit, but we know we're going to have to add a turn lane. Alteration of train is kind of the same deal, out of your hands, but they're going to be reviewing it, and they may make changes at, you know, when they decide to look at it. But other than that, I think we have everything pretty much wrapped up, and for the next meeting.
Okay, so are you looking for a continuance just to that meeting?
Yes, please.
That'd be February 28th?
Correct. I know we've done this 100 times. Do I need a motion to make that?
Do you want to open it up to the public first?
Yeah, that was...
Yes, please. Unless Barbara has any comments, or Annie, sorry.
No, I'm good with the continuance.
And absolutely, does the public have any comments on this application? Jen, do you have any?
Just a comment of that wanting to make sure that, you know, if the hydrogeologic study isn't in by, say, next week, that, just to ensure that Mike would have enough time to be able to review it. So, I could see it being very tight, even if some review can be done for the next meeting.
Yeah, we recognize that, and we also understand, the board has to continue it, you know, in person anyway, if we had to continue it. So, it's not like you could cancel the meeting just because we didn't have it in time.
Right.
Right, I guess my thing was, what if we continued it to the next meeting after that? We could still meet if he was, everything was ready.
Oh, yeah.
That's what, that's, I guess, my point.
If it's ready, you certainly can act on it.
If you weren't ready for the next meeting, we wouldn't have to meet for you to ask for a continuance.
No, you would. That's what I was saying.
You still do?
Yeah.
Yeah, you still do.
So, even if I continued it till April 30th, whatever?
You couldn't hear it before that.
Really?
Yeah. Because the public would have, this is your notification to the public when the next meeting's going to be heard.
I get it.
So, there being no questions from the public, I will make a motion that we move to accept and continue this to the next meeting on the 28th.
Second.
This is Barbara. I, second.
Barbara, second.
Actually, Mr. Guide, you had already made the motion, but I'll give Ms. White the second.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the continuation of 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp., Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for an amended site plan at 357 and 9 Puzzle Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27.4. And this is a project that there is four, or one existing, two, depending on you, like an existing buildings, primarily, that's what we're looking at right now, that there were some deviations from what was approved compared to what was built.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and yeah, that's accurate. We would request a continuance for this project to the next meeting. We are looking at the items that the board asked the applicant to address, and should have all that information ready at least for review before the next meeting.
And just for, because there's a couple new faces in the audience, can you briefly summarize some of the things you're working on?
Yeah, the major thing was the drainage, because a couple of the drainage ponds that were shown on the original site plan didn't get approved. So, what my firm has been tasked by the applicant to do is to determine if what was built is sufficient, and if not, come up with a solution to the drainage, match what was there previously, or approved, I should say. There's a couple other minor things, one which was the, a review of the retaining wall as well. I think there was some landscape issues as well.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, or Jen, do you have any comments before I open?
I have not received any updated information on this, so I don't have any new comments.
That landscaping issue, would that happen to be Mr. Fitzpatrick's?
I'll let him speak to that.
That's being addressed or looked at? I'd like to know for my own thing, but that's being looked at? You've talked with him or with the people there, Jamie?
You open a public comment.
Yeah, I was just going to see if the board had any other comments, or Jim?
I would just like to echo Ms. Rauten's earlier comment about getting paperwork in early enough so that it can be reviewed, because you're talking 14 days from now, a new drainage report is not going to be something that if I get on a Thursday, you're going to have a review for Tuesday.
For this application and the previous application?
Yes.
I would agree with that. It's, they're both fairly large packets. So, just consider that. Barbara or Annie, do you have any comments before we open this?
This is Annie. I'd like to, basically in the same line of what Mr. Mashon was saying, I'd like to know what the status is of the, of Mr. Donovan reviewing the compliance with this whole thing. I didn't hear anything about his involvement, and I wanted, I'm looking forward to hearing our zoning officer report as a part of this.
Okay. Thank you, Annie. I'm not sure if anybody here could provide that, but, or...
I certainly can't provide your code enforcement officer's report. I do want to say that that, his report is somewhat outside of the jurisdiction of this board. I understand it is relevant, but the applicant is here before you to have the site plan that is there become what is actually, has been approved by the town, or to bring it into compliance. We know there are some issues. The status of the landscaping code enforcement is a separate activity, although the landscaping on the plan that is before you certainly is relevant to the planning board. I know that's a fine line, but it is one way half the thread.
Thank you for the clarification.
My video froze.
I think it's on your end, Annie.
You're back.
Perfect.
So, you could hear from the applicant representative, from Tom, if they've had any further discussion with the landscaping. You certainly can open it up to the public.
Why don't, do you have any comments to that?
I'm taking it all until Mike's meeting, Rick.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. Tom, like, boy agent for, builder for the development. I think I'm just going to leave it till next week, because we're amidst of change in things.
Okay.
And Barry's trying to make things work on that end of it, so some things may need to change.
Okay.
And then, we'll ask for a waiver on some of the trees and correct it to the, so our drainage calcs work, because there has to be some changes.
Okay.
We just got to decide on how we're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. And, sorry.
You have an email that they asked to be, have mentioned?
Sure. As part of the public comment, I, we did receive an email, so I'm opening this up to the public, and this gentleman was not able to attend tonight. Mr. Cor...
Cochran.
Cor, Corrin? Corrin?
Cochran.
Cochran?
Sergeant Woods.
Sergeant Woods, thank you. He is there, Sergeant Woods. They had a comment on plantings, and I'm going to summarize this without reading it directly, but they mentioned that there was quite a few trees shown on the map, I'm assuming the plans, that were planted, and, but they were asking or suggesting that there was some additional plantings. And without looking, knowing their address, it's kind of hard for me to state where or where they're not looking at. Oh, sorry, it's actually in this other email that's up top. They're at 11 Oak Hill Drive, and they would have to, they would like to have a response from the developers representative as their plans for planting trees in the buffer that abuts Sergeant Woods. So, right now, that they say there's approximately 30 trees. It's a general summary.
I did send them to code enforcement.
Okay, so, based on the comments we received, we, because it's, the boards, the board does not enforce codes, as I think most of the people here understands that, or previously approved plans, so they were directed to the code enforcement, understanding that you are now in front of the board to amend or change potentially some of this, so...
So, what he's talking about is they overcut their side in project when they did their end, and they're trying to get us to fill our end in, so, because we have never cut any trees, where he's talking about. We never cleared any sections on that end, so they've been, look, this is probably year 10, them trying to get them trees back in there, at least. And they cut their side, not within the 50 feet of the lot line. They're probably down to five, and then, so that makes our side look thinner, but we never had any trees in there. It's all always been a wetland area, so we're not even doing any work there. So, I know exactly what he's talking about. It's just, like I said, it's been an ongoing. If there's something I can do to make everybody happy, I'll take a look at it again.
Okay, yeah.
Just try to appease them, all right?
We, I haven't had the opportunity to look at this. This email came in four hours ago, so...
It was in the southwest corner of the parking lot for 9B. It's down in that end, right there. It says, "Wetland Brook that runs from our property through theirs, under a bridge."
Okay. Thank you. And would anybody else in the public like to speak to the current plans that are in front of the board?
Jamie Fitzpatrick, Walmart Farms. I'm not sure where the current plans are in front of the board, so I can't specifically speak to that. But I've been coming to all the meetings when this has come back up. We've continued it in October. We've continued it in October, and December, and January. It's gonna get continued again in February. My concern is we run out of the planting season again, and we've run out of the planting season before. I'm not an expert, and I don't have a lot of knowledge about the drainage and the retaining walls and the structural issues, and I understand that those are complicated, and studies are being done in engineering, et cetera, but none of that applies to the plantings. In the last meetings, there were discussions back and forth as to there was, there wasn't, what is or what isn't there, and we're still waiting for the developer to say what he says is or isn't the way it's supposed to be. I'd sent a note to the entire board saying, why are we waiting on that? The board can simply say, the enforcement officer asked the Board of Selectmen, you tell us, you're the guy, just tell us what is and isn't planted, and is it or is it not there? There's no structural issues here, there's no, there's no engineering requirements here. They either are or aren't plantings that match what's on the drawings. I just don't understand why the board has to wait to get that information, and my concern is, after witnessing planting seasons come and go and nothing getting planted, that, let me rephrase that, limited things getting planted, that we're gonna run into that again this spring, because spring would be the perfect time, as I understand it anyways, to do the planting. So, I would again request the board to expedite that piece of it, I think that's within your purview, you don't need to wait.
We have no authority to do any of that, unless you want to clarify.
So, you have authority with the application that is before you to request an accurate as-built, which can include the location of landscaping. That you can do. The planning board, and I understand this is a fine line, the planning board cannot direct the code enforcement officer to go out and see what is there per the current existing approved plan. That is the Board of Selectmen.
But I'm pretty sure the planning board has the Board of Selectmen's email address.
They do, and they have a representative here, I'm sure he's happy to take it back to the select board, but they have to act as a full board.
So, I will say this, that I personally talked with Mr. Donovan. He was under the assumption that it was a done deal in what was going on there, and I told him that it was not, and things were not done the way they were supposed to, and that he needs to enforce that. And I'm not quite sure if he doesn't quite understand how he can enforce that to have them do that, but I have talked with him, and I will have another discussion with him about that.
And I understand there's a distinction between the two pieces, so, yes, I understand that that is a Board of Selectmen code enforcement, and I've written those letters to the Board of Selectmen for that discussion, but from a planning board perspective, you have a right to understand what's there, and as one of the governing bodies of the town, you can ask to have that information provided to you so you can make the comparison to what's on the plans.
I, to that point, I think I'm already aware of what's there and what's not there, but we can't, all we're doing is looking at the plans that are in front of us. That's me speaking for myself, not the board, sorry.
I do think so. You should be expecting a new set of plans, because the drainage will be updated to deal with the drainage as the site has, as it was built. At that point, it would be good to require that the inclusion of existing landscaping or plantings, if they are the row of new plantings, be indicated on the plan. The, it should be a, what is on that site now, and what are you proposing to do to bring it into compliance? That is what you have been asking for. I think that we are getting there, you don't have it yet.
So if I may, Jamie, what, so let's just say, right now, they're gonna come to me and they'll be like, there's 15 trees right here, okay? And we look at this old plan where it says there's supposed to be 75 trees there. We can say, we need you to plant 60 trees on this plan, and Barry can say, okay, we don't need to see it updated, they'll do 60 trees. After that, it's out of our hands completely. So if they plant those trees or not, it's got nothing to do with us, because we told them to, but after that, we have no, do you see what I'm saying? Is that like, we can tell them to plant the trees, and they can agree, and this is really broad right now, I'm not trying to single anything out, but I'm just saying that after we approve it with the 60 trees, or 70, whatever number it is, that's it for us.
And I understand that.
Okay.
And we've been here for many, many years having these discussions as to why aren't we in compliance with what the plan says, and we're not, and numerous different things that we're waiting on the continuance for. My point that I'm trying to make, and I'm not doing it very well, is, we're waiting for the developer to tell the board what the as-is position is. I'm simply saying, you can get it on your own from the plantings, you don't have to wait for the developer to tell you. Because if he tells you, not that they're gonna do anything untoward, I'm not suggesting that at all, but from a procedural point of view, if they come in and say, we've planted 75, and there's only 15, you're just gonna accept that without anybody validating it? And if you're gonna have to validate it after the fact, validate it before the fact, then it speeds the whole process up.
So, you can have, and I actually would encourage you to have Mike McNally go out and do a second site walk, possibly with the code enforcement officer, building inspector, to verify the as-built, as-prepared again, which I'm sure it will be much more accurate than the original one, to review, because it would be good for him to review the proposed drainage, which I strongly suspect is going to change, and verify the trees. He is independent of this board, he is advisory only. That, I think, gets to what Mr. Fitzpatrick is seeking, but you're also waiting for the applicant to propose what he is wanting to do to bring his site into compliance, which it is not currently in compliance with the approved site plan from a few years ago. That's why they're here.
Mr. Chair, this is Annie.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask, do we have any opportunity as a part of this condominium application to put a bond in for compliance, or is that past history?
So you, Annie, you certainly can put a bond in for, so for the amended site plan portion of that, that's what this is. For any drainage, any additional landscaping that needs to happen, you absolutely can put in bonding requirements.
Okay, so I, under that condition, I'd like to get not only the as-built verified by the town engineer and zoning enforcement officer, but also an accurate estimate for a bond for compliance issues which may exist, so that we can consider that as a part of the whole application.
I don't have a comment at this time.
I would recommend you see what they're going to put forward first, because it's going to be, I think, fairly different than what you have seen in previous iterations of this plan set.
I tend to agree.
And I think it may come to the point where Annie's request, that would be the point where you'd want to do that.
Sure, on approval.
Or possibly before an approval, because you'd want to know that the bond amount, if you do a bond, matches, so.
Fair enough.
Again, looking at the planting season and that kind of thing, I'd like to see if we couldn't look at a bond amount at the same time, so that possibly we could move forward into an approval. I just don't see, what I'm seeing is probably another month's delay if we don't have a bond recommendation. Just a comment.
Posting of the bonds can be a condition of approval.
So, if I may, because some of the drainage issues are, this is not a good time to do excavation and construction, it is our plan to come back with a drainage plan that includes the bond amount that is required, because we know, we, the applicant wants to move quicker to sell those properties than construction season. So, is, our intent is to come in with the bond estimate for the board to approve, so that we can move forward with this. And we can include any additional landscaping that is appropriate as part of that.
Okay, so you're looking to, in an effort to expedite the sale of the properties, get this approved, post a bond, so the board is comfortable that those improvements will be made pending the approval?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And I would suggest that when those, when you guys have all that stuff done, and it's done before you come, before us, that we could be notified, that way there we could get Mr. McNally out there prior to that meeting, and that would help to, you know what I mean, get everything on the, on the same page, so that there will be no more continuances or whatever, and we can...
Yeah, that's the hope, we'll provide him with all the information we have, and then he can do his comparison, and obviously he's got to review the drainage as well as the numbers for the bond.
Right, but that's what I mean, so you guys get it done, let us know, so we can get them out there, then you guys, everything goes well, we won't have to keep these continuances going.
Absolutely, I mean, I know that the applicant is, is very anxious to get this completed so he can sell the property.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Barbara.
Actually, this is to Mr. Marshawn. Can you tell me as selectmen, do the selectmen have the authority to tell the code enforcement person to coordinate with the town engineer and go out with him to look at things that he's, that he's going to identify as things that are, have not been fixed, so they're not just, so he's not just reading somebody's letter on a piece of paper, he's gonna go out there with the town engineer and see for himself with his own eyes what's going on, and so they're on the same page?
I will talk to the code enforcement officer, Barbara.
Okay, because I think it's really important for him to be out there at the same time, so that they're knowing what they're both talking about. Thank you.
I would certainly say that is correct.
Thank you for that comment, Barbara. Any other questions or comments from the public? Good evening.
Nancy Kozloski, 3 Woodland Road. So it's my understanding that the planning board put forth to the applicant that outside lighting should shine down. However, every light on the applicant's buildings, 3 through 9, shine out towards my house, towards my kitchen window. There are two large parking lot lights, much taller than the rest, and they just shine out like a beacon. I talked to a Puzzle, a Puzzle Lane representative mentioning the fact about the two light poles, and was told that he would look into it, and they're still there, but, or and, I happen to be in the Home Depot parking lot, and they have very nice lights on their building that block everything except for what shines down. What's at Puzzle Lane does not shine up, but shines out and down. So I'm just here to complain. I'm here to complain. And so, question for the code enforcement person. Another requirement of the building, of the planning board, is that there are no trucks to be idling all night long. And there are trucks idling all night long. I have dates if you want them, so I can't call code enforcement, because he's not there, and he's not gonna come and check this out, right? So who's to believe me that there's trucks idling?
Well, first of all, what you do is you come to Town Hall.
Okay.
You fill out a complaint form.
Okay.
Write out where your complaint is and what it is, and then if Mr. McDonovan is not here, then he will be given that complaint form, and then it is his job to take that and investigate the complaint. If nobody comes and fills, if nobody comes and fills out a complaint form, then he has nothing to look at or to go by.
That is true.
He has no idea what he's supposed to be investigating.
That is true.
So this is why we need people to start coming to Town Hall, instead of just talking to this person, and talking to this person, and, because what we need to do is we have substantiate a file, when there is something that is going wrong in town, so that we can substantiate what is wrong, and then address what is wrong.
Okay, I'll be there tomorrow.
Very good.
But the lights are more important to me.
That's, fill, write the complaint out.
Yes.
Well, I don't know, is that an as-built thing? Because it's supposed to be as-built that they shine down.
So I can, I can address the lighting.
Okay.
So when this application first got approved before the planning board, Newton had on its requirements that they have dark sky compliant lighting, which basically just means it all shines down, it can't go off of the property. If they are not fulfilling that, and I have never been on the site at night, then they would be out of compliance with their site plan approval. That is a, file a complaint with the code enforcement officer.
So that's another code enforcement thing?
It is.
Yep, so you got two complaints to write out.
Yes, I'll be busy tomorrow.
There you go.
One other relevant thing that does, is the lighting, but it's a few other things. The planning board, as this site has been amended over the years, has continually put forth the continuation of all of the approvals of the truck idling not being allowed, some various other conditions on the site has continually moved forward. I would, my recommendation will be that they continue to do that, unless there is a need to modify something in particular. They could modify them, but they have, over the years, continued to bring those forward.
Yes.
So, okay.
Okay, see you guys tomorrow with the Town Hall.
Most of us will not be here, sorry.
Just to address the last speaker, in the past, the planning board has recommended, and the police chief was in agreement with, if you have an issue like truck idling, which is not something that code enforcement can definitely be there, you call the police department, they will at least come over, they will hear the fact that it's 2:00 a.m. and there's several trucks idling.
Verifying.
And they will actually make notations, so that it's not he said, she said, it's the police actually actively witnessed it.
Okay, and they may unfortunately be going over there more often after this morning.
You're good thinking after today, because there was a robbery this morning, right?
That's what I heard.
Yes. This was in the gym.
And then that would be other, would be the other thing with the police, if they went and investigated and they found the truck idling, they would be able to inform, inform the driver to shut the truck off.
FMCA rule says they can't idle anymore, there's nothing idle.
I, I know, I'm, I'm...
I'm just, I'm trying to be nice.
And I'm just saying, if it was happening, that's what, what would take place.
Is there any more comments from the public on this application? So, I think there's a path forward for some complaints or comments, and we are working towards, or the applicant is working towards, getting a...
Making a motion to continue?
Plan. And you're looking to continue to the 28th as well?
Yes, please.
February or March?
February 28th.
February 28th, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Motion to continue to February 28th.
Second.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask, who, who requested that continuance?
Mr. Marshawn.
No.
No, no, no. Barry.
Mr...
It was Mr. Guyer?
Guyer, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one point of reference, can you send me an email with those requests? Because technically, I have nothing to put in the file, other than the minutes, and it would be better if we had the... and it would be better if we had those requests in a more timely fashion.
For our paperwork, that you were the one who asked for the request, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Her house is 50 feet below the, the base of the light. How does the light operate? They're all at least 30, so. Me, Barbara, I'm talking.
There you go.
Hey, you.
You got it.
So, for board business, we have acceptance of the minutes of January 24th, 2023.
Motion to accept the minutes, dated 1/24/23.
Second.
Second.
All they have is red.
Kind of worse. Oh, you don't want to sign the NIPA manifest in red?
I don't.
Do you need a pen, Mr. Chairman?
I can borrow his. Is that mine?
Looks like it.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Next on the agenda is approval of the NIPA manifest for $617.24.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. White? Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
And Jen, your last update on the grants.
So, great news, you guys got awarded a $40,000.500 grant.
More than we were expecting.
Yes, a little bit more. I, because of some aspects, we had to tweak a few things, so it is a little bit more than the original estimate, so it's $40,000. It is $15,000 to be doing a needs analysis, that is basically your master plan housing chapter, and some public education and outreach and engagement. And that part is mainly to come up with some of the goals and actions for the town to take related to housing, and also to serve as some public education. The second phase is to do a regulatory audit, that is to look for barriers and opportunities for modifying your local regulations that impede or could improve housing opportunities. It does not require you to do any of those potential regulation changes. The intent is to have you look at them, understand what the impact might be, what the change might be, and how that might fit in with the broader Newton goals for housing and the region and the states. The next things that have to happen is we are waiting for the contract information from Plan New Hampshire and New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, who is just the funding authority, to come down for the select board to be able to sign off on the grant, because you will be accepting funds. The intent is that the, as part of that, the town will select Rocketman Planning Commission to serve as the consultant, because you have to have a qualified consultant to be able to do this work. We are the qualified consultant. We've already been approved. We will work on the, it can either be a letter of agreement for us, or it can be a separate contract, it kind of depends on how the town would like to do it for doing the reimbursement. But basically, we will take care of the work and the reporting, the funds would get requested by the town, we would invoice the town, but it ends up being a no cost to Newton itself. There is a little bit of administrative aspects, there is $500 as part of the grant to help cover that minor administrative expense.
So that goes to the town?
Yes, so all the money goes to the town, but RPC invoices for the work that we do, you guys can keep some of it, because we won't be doing some of that administrative aspect.
Perfect, so it's actually a $0...
It is a $0 expense, it is all COVID relief funds coming down through the state.
So there's actually money to administer the grant internal to the town?
Yes. So we'll work through that paperwork. One of the things that is included in all of the grants as they come through is funding to have one or more municipal officials or someone in the town participate, it's called the Housing Academy, it's being run by UNH Cooperative Extension. It's basically education and outreach training for people to understand when they're talking about housing, what are they talking about? It's learning the background, it's learning some of the terminology, so there are people in town beyond myself who can kind of speak the speak of what housing is and the regulations that are involved in it. It is a virtual training, there are four training sessions there operating, there is a stipend if necessary, so trying to identify at least one person in town who can attend one or more of those, I have to attend them anyway, but I can get more information.
You volunteering, Jim, you're like waving.
Well, I just figured...
Dennis should do it.
If you want me to go, I can collect the information and pass it along to board members who I know are mostly otherwise occupied.
I will say, a good chunk of this is going to be me working to educate you. So we do, and it doesn't just have to be planning board members, we can certainly bring in a few other people. It would be great to have a subcommittee of the planning board that's willing to work with me on this specific task, it could just be two or three people. Four or five is getting a little bit big, but as soon as we get the grant, if we want to talk about that, especially if we might have some changes on the board with the elections coming up, to sort of settle into a core group that's willing to work with me, and we can do more of it outside of the planning board meetings, it tends to be a little bit more efficient to do that. But the planning board for any master planning has complete oversight, the regulatory audit that will come in a couple of months will be advisory only, I will certainly be working back and forth with you, so you'll see as it's developing, because I don't want to have any surprises for you, but you are not obligated to enact on any of the regulations if you don't want to, goes through all of the normal discourse of adopting regulation. And as we get a little bit more into the summer, where you have more of an idea of sort of your housing data, what it means, what you can do with it, what your opportunities are for regulation changes, applying for a Phase 3 if, if we, you want to, that actually would be getting money towards working on those regulations in depth to try and work on getting them on, adopted and on the books. And I don't know what those might be yet, it might be a bundle of some little ones, it might be one really, really big one.
So this grant does not cover the actual revisions to the regulations?
It does not. There are small ones like, that will come probably through the regulatory audit, a very easy regulation that towns can consider is allowing detached accessory dwellings. You don't need to seek grant funds to work on detached accessory dwelling ordinances, if that's something you want to do.
Can you give an example of something that is not easy? Is that like a cluster housing?
Cluster subdivision is not easy. If we were to do a major overhaul of the uses that are allowed in different districts, if you want, so, some of your districts don't allow housing. If suddenly we want to allow certain types of housing in those districts that currently don't allow them, you'd want to have more work done, you'd want to have some renderings drawn up, so you know what that might look like. If you wanted to have a much higher density, like places you don't currently allow multifamily, well, suddenly you do want to allow multifamily all over Newton as, as an extreme.
Hush your mouth.
What would that look like? So it's, it's for either several big regulations or, I'm sorry, for a couple of big regulations, maybe, maybe just one or two, or for a cluster of smaller ones, that just because of the volume.
Okay.
So it, we'll have a better idea, honestly, by June.
So, I'm just kind of like playing this out, so by June, if we, the only thing we come up with is allow detached accessory dwelling units less than 800 square feet, I think their current is 800 square feet for attached?
Yeah.
We could just make that change?
That's something I can work with you in the normal course of circuit rating.
But if we decide we want cluster housing and multifamily in one area and something else, more than one accessory dwelling unit on a lot, then it would be...
You might want to consider applying for a grant at that point, you know, and they have up to a hun, the grant limit for that phase is $100,000. I truly don't believe Newton would have $100,000 worth of zoning changes that you're going to want to do. But you could realistically want 5, 10, 15, 20, depending on what you want to do.
And if, in the best interest of the town, if there's $5,000 worth of edits, instead of us spending the community's money to have you or somebody of your equivalent capacity revise those regs, we should seek the grant funding, get those covered, and then it's not directly impacting the town, although I understand it's not free, but...
Yes, so yes, if, if it's more than a few hours of my work, to be honest, or my equivalence work, apply for the grant. If it's just a few hours, it's, the paperwork's probably not even worth it.
So I know we talked about this before, so the money, at first we said, we thought that you were going to hold it?
We thought that the grant funder was able to directly, because we have a number of these grants, would be able to have the money go directly to us, because of the paperwork that they have, we're not able to do that, unfortunately. It was actually a little frustrating to find that out.
So they hold the money, or it comes to the town?
They hold the money. The town will receive the money when you put in a request for funds, because the work has been completed.
So that we can pay you?
Then, then RPC would submit an invoice to the town, so that you can pay us, and we can set it up, so it's on a cycle that works for the town, whether that's monthly or every other month.
So you'll reach out to Jim, the town administrator?
Yep.
And let him know what's going on?
I already took care of a lot of that legwork.
And the actual contract will come through between Newton and the Invest New Hampshire grant funder, that is its own contract. Then we can have through a separate contract or a letter of agreement how the town wants us to be submitting invoice, and it's going to be a little different for all of our towns, so that's why I'm being a little open on that.
Yeah, I let Matt know that this was coming.
Okay.
I'm not sure if he spoke with Jim, because Mark was out at the time.
Right, that's why, that's why I'm asking, because Jim had just taken over to make sure that there was no, yes?
I can set up a separate manifest and spreadsheet for tracking that, so that, I assume that I'll get an invoice from RPC, it'll be presented to the planning board, and then that goes to the treasurer to be withdrawn from those.
If, if that's how Newton would like to do it, that's fine. It does, the grant does require monthly progress reports, which we would presume that we would be doing, so with that report, we can issue all of our...
You just attach it to your invoice?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
So it'll, it'll probably be within this week that we'll get the contract information, so...
Sounds good.
If ideally, it could come on the select board meeting in the next couple of weeks.
Do you have a request that to the agenda, or will you just add it?
Yeah, you just put it in, put the request to add it to the, to the agenda.
Okay, as, as soon as the contract information comes in.
Right, and either Jim or Diane will add it.
Okay. But I will say, this is going to be good master planning work, Newton hasn't had this kind of level of funding for this kind of stuff, since I've been working with you. Ever might be the correct word, too.
I think it's mostly Barbara and Jim massageing the regs over the years. Is there anybody else that's changed them?
I think it's a worthwhile discussion, I think you guys, dealing with the land use chapter, the vision in the past couple of years, I, I think you're set up well for doing this next chapter.
It isn't, I should know this, it's not specific, is it specific to housing only?
It's specific to housing or areas related to housing, so I'm going to put in as much demographic, infrastructure information, things that support housing, and that includes natural resources, that are impediments to housing, so I'm going to put as much of that information into it that I can.
But we can't, even for like Phase 3, we can't take a, like a broad look at our entire regulation? Just for like, over the districts?
Only as it relates to housing. There are a few communities, and just an, an example of a big regulation you could do, I do have one community that's going to draft two sets of regulations for the same area. One is with the presumption that they will continue to not have water and sewer, and therefore, they need to stay a little bit less dense. The second set will be if they were to get water and sewer, which is a more realistic opportunity in this one community, how much density they would want to put on this certain area. So you can do some fairly big brush regulations, kind of depends on what you're looking at, though.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I don't have any other things to discuss. Does anybody else have anything?
Just a brief comment, since we're losing several people, at the next meeting will be their last. If I could ask those people to bring back any plan sets that they have for stuff that is currently, two items that are currently being continued, just because I need to be able to pass stuff along. One person was very nice enough to return his zoning book and his law book, but I could have three new people, and I have no duplicate copies of...
I'm more than happy to donate my time to the town. If you need copies, let me know.
But luckily, you're not getting to leave.
I could always resign.
Oh, no, you can't.
I would like to be able to look at the applicant and go, do me a favor, as of March 1st, I'm going to tell everybody to burn everything they already have, and give me new sets for everybody, but I don't believe that that is feasible. Yeah. If I don't get enough copies back, I will request, because I can't have, you can't have board members that are sitting here going, what are you talking about?
I mean, if there's a problem, I'll, I'll run some sets. 11 by 17s, I'll just...
For most of the, most of the paperwork, it's not a problem, but when you're talking 50-page plan sets, you know, I'm not running those off of my new printer.
Well, if there's an issue, let me know, I'll take care of it. Is there anything else? Motion to adjourn at 8:05, 8:02?
Second. Good to go.
You're declaring it adjourned?
Yes.
It's adjourned.
Adjourned.
8:03.
8:03, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Okay. Good night.